Okay, it is three o'clock, so we are going to reconvene into the committee of the hall. So I need a motion though to resolve into the committee of the hall, please. Thank you. First and second, all those in favor? And that was Carrie, thank you. So just a reminder for council that the delegation from B C Transit has been moved to six, the regular council meeting at six o'clock. So the first delegation that we have up today is B C Housing. And we also have Nancy Gurr and Sheila Adcock here representing the Trail Association of Community Living to present an update on the operations at the Lenina Shelter. So go ahead, thank you for being here.
Well, thank you, Mary Jones, and thank you, council, for having us here today. And so I've been doing that date since January, because I believe last time, so you guys had an update, whatever to that. So since January first, the Lenina Shelter and Trail Association has done a fantastic job in housing around individuals, twenty five individuals, market rental housing. And that's because of the support they provide for these individuals as far as life skills and connected with community resources such as mental health and first aid. And also to interior health for that. I just want to touch on, I think there were some questions around drop-in services and what that looked like. So a shelter is, this shelter, not any of our shelters, drop-in is not permitted. As far as like people just coming to the shelter for food or meals to have a shower and laundry. You have to be an overnight guest at the shelter in order to access any of the services at the shelter. So they're only for individuals who are staying overnight, not for drop-in. Just let me know if you have any questions on that, and I'll elaborate a little bit more. And then just letting you know the intake process is quite extensive by Sheila and her team. This is where they identify the individuals. They kind of get to know what kind of services they need as far as health and safety. And it just, you know, it is low barrier shelter, so individuals are able to use on the site and get support from staff. And then it really is also referring them to different resources within the community to get those kind of help and assistance to help them better their health and their skills. So do you have any questions so far? Just want to take a pause? No? Okay. Did you have any questions for me?
Any questions? Go ahead, council.
Just from the the letter, how do you define funded capacity? What does that mean?
So each shelter has X amount of beds in it, so that's what the capacity is. I think this is twenty five. Twenty five, so it's for a maximum of twenty five guests.
Okay.
And that's what we provide is twenty five, like burning between five individuals. Go ahead, councilor Hanson.
Thank you. And so just wanting to understand the process on when there are empty beds. How is it communicated to our, the people that are in the field, so the outreach nurses? Our C M P, so what's the process and protocol that you guys have developed and policies? And do you have them written somewhere so that someone can easily identify what the policies are? Making sure those beds are always have an opportunity to be filled?
Yeah, as Sheila asked about.
We work, because we, at C D S office downtown, we have people dropping in there and they are informed that if they want to see if there is a bed, they come into our office and we have people dropping in during the day to get coats and stuff and phoning. We also have outreach that goes out a couple of times a week from our office under our Getting to Home program, so she's the housing facilitator. So she'll go and speak with people and pass the message on. We let anchors know. We let the nurses that come, five days a week, there's nurses that come to the shelter and we tell them if you see see anybody on the street and the first question they ask is, are their beds available? So if they see somebody on the street, they'll either phone or if they've been at the shelter already, they'll know there's one female, one male, and they'll phone. We get them to phone right away because if there is an empty bed, it's first come, first served. So if somebody, you might see an empty bed this morning and then tell somebody after lunch, there's one, but by the time they come down, there might not be. So we let people, we get phone calls in the daily from the R C M P or the hospital and they'll call and say, is there a bed? And we'll say, yes, there is. But we can't hold it overnight, or if you're discharging somebody in two or three days, you'll have to call back to see. So typically, they don't stay empty for too long and, but we let all the teams that come to the shelter also go into the community so they know.
Yeah, that's our, just follow up. So and and could you just shed some light on how many do we see coming from the daily or from the hospital for transition? Because I know a lot of individuals come from out of area for care, and if they choose not to go back to their community, now they're out in our community. So is there a lot of connection between the hospital and the daily and the shelter appropriating those individuals that now have nowhere to go because they don't want to go back to where they came from to space for them?
There, we do get probably, if I had to guess off the top of my head, you know, up to maybe ten a year to start from the hospital. That's not for people that are out of town typically, though. It could be somebody ended up in the daily because of their housing broke down. They lived with family and they can't go back there. Or we've got a lot where they're discharged. They were in the hospital be or in cells because they're moved for domestic and they can't go back, but they're from here, so we get them in there and start working with them. Okay, now what? How do we find the other housing? Last, between January and now, I think when I went back through the records, there was at least six that we helped get back to the home community. So somebody will get discharged here from the daily or from the hospital had to come for surgery or something. Not necessarily need to shelter long term, but are discharged on a Friday and can't get the mountain bike spice bus back till Monday or Wednesday or Friday. And so that's what we said, come for a few days and help you get back home. Most people are pretty happy to go back to their home community. There's very few that are, end up staying here from other communities there. You know, so we help them get back and we yeah, but there's not a lot discharged lately. There has been a few more discharged from the hospital, but it's typically and the daily, but they have been from here.
What has, so thank you through the chair. So twenty fives have been
House, market rental.
Oh, and that would be market rental, okay. And that's from the, the, what's it called?
Getting to home.
Get into home, thank you.
Well, they work, we work in the game. So if somebody comes into the shelter, typically if they're coming in, they might be in crisis, so they're kind of escalated. They haven't been on meds for all, don't really have the wraparound services.
Yeah.
So we hook them up with the oak team or the nurses and the doctor, get them stable a few nights rest because they come in pretty heightened.
Yeah.
And so a few days rest and we say within three days and we get you to meet with the facilitator. By that time, we've gathered information from them. Our, our intake form is probably about fifteen pages long. And it talks about, do you have any supports? Where are you from? Do you want to go home? What do you need here? What's your emergent need? Because it might be, I have an infection or something. And then within three days, they meet with the housing facilitator and we help them develop a housing plan. Well, first I need to have all these services in place, then I'll be successful in maintaining housing. Lately, that's been a lot with helping people maybe pair up because it's it's too expensive to rent on P W E D, so we've been able to help people pair up and maybe YouTube can rent a place and share the rent stuff, but the twenty five people that we did get housed, I just picked the numbers that were people that were absolutely homeless, not those that maybe had had a eviction notice and we moved in too. This was people that were living on the streets or in the shelter.
And then just a follow-up that I made. So Sheila say, like, Trail doesn't have supportive housing, but if we did, would there be people in the shelter now that would be eligible to take the step, maybe not ready for like market housing, but ready for a supportive housing?
Yeah, yeah. And they've proven that they've, they've been able to maintain their bed at the shelter. Some of them have not been so successful as in other shelters, you know, there's expectations and and sometimes they might not be able to meet them now. They'll come back in a few weeks and say, okay, I'm ready. You know, and stable enough, and then we get them back in and nobody, you know, there's as any shelter, there's a loss of service. If you're same with anywhere, if somebody came into your building and and threatened staff and whatnot, then we like, no, today is not good, come back later. And so we meet with them again and have the full conversation about expectations of behavior again, and typically they're able to come back and meet that expectation. So, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
It's a place to kind of come. We talked before about coming to get stable and kind of do a reset sometimes. If you're living on the streets, you are in fight or flight day and night. And and the hard part they have is because it's not safe to sleep at night, that's when people get hurt. They're awake at night and sleep, find a place to sleep where it's safe during the day. So when you come into a shelter and you're saying you gotta go to bed, they're like, well, I slept all day, I'm wide awake. So it takes a while to kind of get reset back. And that's what you need when you're trying to work in, live in market rentals too, as you're not going to be up all night, or neighbors are trying to, you know, so we kind of try to get them calm, get them up, revisit, re, sometimes they need to go back and get more support, so it's interior help that they have lost in the past and reengage in different services, so.
Yeah, telling you the most simple story. Oh, no, go ahead. Yeah, I think just emphasize what Sheila's saying, the fundamentals of a shelter is really providing that first stage, right? And and being able to provide that compassion and empathy that's missing, right? And building that trust so that you can get them stabilized and can, you know, connect them with resources because then they're more accepting of those resources and that help and that aid. And then, like you said, most, most of the individuals from shelters do actually need that second step with the support housing because it's more the wraparound services and it's more permanency, right?
Okay, so would that be like quite a success then for getting from the shelter straight to market? That would be quite a success, yeah.
That's quite a high number, twenty five out of, you know, that many people and from a shelter on the streets to be housed and still maintain housing?
Yes.
Yeah, congratulations.
And that's one of the resources we refer them to is our Getting to Home Housing Facilitator. So once we get them stable, she works with landlords, she helps get them housed, she, we, through that program, there's a lot of funding around being able to pay your first month's rent because I didn't get a check or I spent my check or paying the damage deposit or getting furniture, getting set up. And then she's able to follow them. And the landlords that have rented to us are very thankful. I met with two this morning coming in to say, I need to thank you because before I was renting the same population, but I had nobody to call. If things went bad. Now if they call us, we go, we talk to the tenant and say like, that's, you're not being a good tenant or at the shelter, you're not being a good neighbor, so you need to prove yourself. And and so we're able to intervene quite quickly and then they don't lose their space and the landlord's pretty happy.
Congratulations, that's really good.
Thanks to the chair. Yeah, she just answered my question is, does the landlord know who, who is moving into their place and that you just answered?
Absolutely, yeah.
That's all, thanks.
And Sheila, I was wondering, what's the longest length of stay that you've had an individual in?
We've got some, a few there, the handful there that have moved there when we moved in September.
Okay.
Yeah, they would be more of a supportive and a lot of them are really when they were, before we built the shelter, they were on the streets together as peers in a group. Then they moved there as peers in a group and a lot of them are terrified of moving out and living on their own. Who's going to find me if I overdose? Who's going to help me? Who is going to be there? They're used to being around a bunch of peers, so we have worked with a few of them to say, well, you and you get along really well. Why don't you guys share an apartment? It's a key bedroom, you guys can share it and then you can back each other. And we've had people that have been housed during that week. Same as there's, there's three or four houses in the community of people that are retired and just can't afford their house and they're saying, I'll rent out a room. Have you got somebody? And then we make sure it's a good fit and they'll go rent out a room that they can afford, but then there's other people in the house.
Well, thank you.
And how many of the individuals would you say, because we have those that do have that home right now? We have some that don't have a home right now. And I wonder what the intel is on the individuals that are not choosing or or are they unable to because there has been an issue? What is the, you know, how many people have, I guess, you know, have been banned from being able to be there and they're on our street because of that, or people that aren't wanting to follow the rules? Like, what's that? I just choose not to go? Or how many people have just been, sorry, you can't follow the rules and you're no longer allowed to keep trying because you can't follow them? What does that look like?
The majority on the street would never go to any shelter. They love, that's their lifestyle now and they would not go to any shelter. If you have a loss of service, typically the longest that we've had a loss of service would be, would be a month and then you come back and revisit it. And then we have a conversation and revisit the stuff. I would say out of all of the individuals in Trail and some of these guys are now housed on their own or back with families, there is a very small number that wouldn't, it wouldn't be a good fit because they are predatory and assaultive, aggressive towards all of the other twenty five guests that are in there. We have to ensure that their safety is a priority as well as the staff. But there are some that are predatory and want to come in there and they come in and they they can, and it's unfortunate, but that's just, but that's less than a handful. That just wouldn't, and and most of them wouldn't, wouldn't try to come into a shelter anyway.
Okay, so any other questions from council? Councilor, that's all.
Yeah, through the chair. I just want to talk a little bit about what's going on outside the shelter. And by the way, congratulations, twenty five people into housing, an impressive number. There's the bridge to bridge Good Neighbor, I think you call them perimeter walks.
Yeah.
And I'm just gonna, I guess my question would be, what action, if any, is taken if staff find a shelter guest openly using illegal drugs in this area within that bridge to bridge perimeter?
We're not so much going out to monitor their drug use, it's the loitering and hanging around. So what we when we go and do our perimeter walks two to three times a day, I can tell you that the minute we start walking up, they leave. They stop by to talk to friends. They know that they could, and we tell them, you risk losing your bed if you're not following the neighbor rules and not hanging out and, and whatnot. We encourage them to move on. Typically, they'll move on before we even get close enough to say hello. So because they know that that is part of their agreement and they could lose their, risk losing their bed.
Thank you for that. Just one more question. For this, would be, would be, would be? Would B C Housing consider extending this Good Neighbor perimeter to include Groude Beach Avenue? And I'm asking this question because I am aware the shelter staff were not able to address loitering, as you can call it, or open drug use by shelter guests on the Groude Beach Avenue lookout before it was taken down by city staff on a motion from this council. And I say this because that particular structure is only thirty meters away from the walking bridge. So my question is that would B C Housing consider? Hopefully, one day we'll have that viewing platform back in, in play. Would you consider extending that perimeter to include Groude Beach Avenue? That's my question. Thank you.
Okay, yeah. So at this stage, we're not contemplating that. We're funding for the bridge to bridge at the moment. So and that's what typical with all of our sites, this one is actually a bit larger than most of our other sites as far as responsibility, not that, so it's usually just around the building. So until we get additional funding for that, we can't come up to that.
Okay, thank you. Is there any other questions from other councilor members, please? Nope. Okay. Thank you for being here today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And we are going to move on to our department updates, our survival updates. And Jared, you have a big job today.
So you keep doing all the Thanks for having me. Thank you, Department reports for the utilities, grounds and roads, purchasing, and mechanical manager of engineering and projects, facilities, parks and recreation and the recreation program coordinator.
Thank you, your worship, council. Thank you for having me today. Yes, a bit of a laundry list. In the essence of trying to conserve our sanity and some time, I've pared it down to some highlights for each department. Just so that we can focus on some of the achievements over the past month. And if there's any residual questions about actions that are currently underway, feel free to ask questions. I'll do my best to answer your questions. So getting right into it, for myself, the big key for this last month was the attendance of the annual conference for asset management B C. Down in Richmond, very well-attended event that continued to grow membership. It was really nice to see other representation from other municipalities going through the same growth that the city of Trail is. Some really good examples of municipalities to look to for solutions. So a nice kickstart to our ongoing twenty twenty six and beyond asset management effort. So that's the highlight for myself. Moving on to utilities. We have been able to complete the airport to hang a water service line installation. Our three-month sanitary sewerless storm flushing has been completed. So just for clarification, that's forty nine sanitary sewer mains that have been proactively jacked out to reduce potential impacts. And then also the, I believe it's the underbridge lighting for on the east side of the Stellberg is not complete and then the west side is underway. It's underway, yeah. Quickly moving over to grounds and roads. We sit anxiously awaiting the white stuff every day now. I've heard predictions of Wednesday. Let's, I don't know, I'm not sure which side I fall on, whether that comes true or not. But very important for us is leaf control in this time of year, so we've been diligently getting our parks and areas with all the leaves under control. Our street sweeper with no, no folks having to clear snow from the streets. We've been able to have twenty hours of coverage on our street sweeper. Making sure that a lot of that debris is clear and won't cause any issues once we get the fun white stuff on the, on the ground. We've been actually very successful over the last few weeks catching up on a lot of our backlog of carpenter works or our new hire in that department has been very successful. It's always nice to bring new people on board and have them show that energy. Winter prep, ongoing, opening snow dump, staking, as well. As well as coordinating on our parking lot clearing. Last one, and I saved it for last because I knew everybody would be excited about it, but the Christmas decorations are going up. So today and tomorrow, I believe, is Roseland Avenue and all the aquatic center was last week, so we're getting through them. Moving over to purchasing mechanical, other than yard cleanup and prep for winter, we've actually successfully completed our first session of the V C M S A Supervisory Safety Certificate Program Training. That was quite delightful. Very good feedback from the individuals involved, both on the content and on the provider. So that is good news. We will be having a second session in spring to catch those folks that weren't available for this one, plus offering more externally to our regional partners. The public sort of pipe racking project, I think we talked about this last time, but is now complete. And our roof repair job is kind of the one I'm focused moving forward. Just hoping to get another window so that we can get that down this year, if not, unfortunately, after week till spring. In terms of the engineering and projects, Fifth Avenue, Helen Shaker's bench, main upgrades have been completed. Our sewage collection, regon spot repairs for this year have also been complete. And we look forward to seeing the responses to our tender for Dudeney Avenue, which closes on the twenty seventh. For facilities, only a couple of items, not to undermine the extensive amount of work it's taken to get here for these items. But fall shutdown, winterization of all of our parks and facilities is now complete, so we're ready for winter there. And the aquatic center is back online. Yes, yes, not without its, its challenges. I will say that we are going through some commissioning and type of issues. But we're back, we're back online in full force. So Parks and Recreation Manager, so with the reopening uptight, we also had a staff training on November tenth in preparation of the, the opening on the twelfth. Very large eager staff all ready to go, which is good to see. Good feedback from the public on the reopening. We're very excited to see the facility up and running and very good feedback both from individuals and from feedback from individuals, often the bathing suit dryers are being utilized. So both that they're really effective and welcome and plus everybody seems to be using them, so it's good news. Finishing up our training that'll go on for a little while longer. And I believe the segment was, we survived the first week is the words from our manager. I think they are a little nervous as the compressed timeline for our offerings up until Christmas is proving to be quite busy, so, but exciting busy. From our Recreation Program Coordinator, couple of updates. One, birthday party bookings continue to increase. This is the first I actually personally had seen this, but this is quite amazing. From a hundred and thirteen bookings in twenty twenty two to two hundred and nineteen this year. So in consideration of where a lot of our facilities were this year, that's quite an impressive number. So the other thing I've noticed, some strong demand for our fitness classes. We've had to extend a couple of our classes to multiple offerings per week. So good support almost. And that is the update for all seven.
Wow, awesome. Any other councilor?
Through the chair. I'm hoping this falls into one of those departments. Is there any update on when Chambers will have the technical capacity to record meetings and allow Zoom access?
Yes, thanks, thanks through the chair, councilor. Gosh, all, I have been coordinating with the provider. They did not quite meet my expectations for our presentation for council to be brought forward this week. Expecting that to be imminent. At which point we'll bring it to council for the review and support of the options moving forward.
Thank you.
Um, councilor Hanson, did you have your hand up? No, somebody on that side. Oh, councilor Martin, thank you.
Can I repeat that report? No, I just want to, I honestly could. I just want to say thanks for the, the sweeper where we live on Marianne Crescent. There's a sycamore tree that they call it, you know, your tree, it keeps on giving. So it's been much appreciated, trust me. Get rid of those leaves, they're pain and you know what, so.
And, and thank you. And through the chair, the one thing I did note is that we have resolved an issue, maybe, maybe I'm the only one who will care about this, but previous versions of our street sweeper have been prone to spontaneous combustion. As some of you likely are aware from previous Roseland Hill incidents. And through some efforts from our operators and from our mechanics, we've actually altered our street sweeper and have seen zero issues related to incendiary events for the whole year. So it's good. We have addressed that and made it much safer of a, of an operation to do, so. Thank you.
Well, councilor Hanson, thank you through the chair. And is there a timeline? I know we haven't seen that white stuff yet, but is there a timeline for communications for reminders of policy coming out for the public, just so that they're aware? I'm really glad the sweep, street sweeper is still out because then we're eliminating issues around drainage and getting proper flow and things that involve because of leaves and whatnot, but just wondering if there's communications as we may see that stuff coming sooner than later.
Yes, thanks. Through the chair, I don't have an understanding. I know that we have a communication strategy for communicating and reminding the public the requirements to support our wonderful snow clearing folks. And yes, imminent is, is the way, we're, we're prepared and we're also prepared with the other elements of snow clearing. With the salt and sand application as well as gearing up for, for sure with flying the brine.
And I'm not sure, actually, it's a great point, Jim, I'm wondering that we had kind of told council actually about a process that our city staff had looked at and seen the success from, in particular, Y R B using the brine as or was I? Oh, I'm Mike, thank you.
So just a quick question. I did have a comment from the individual that lives up on Tamarack Avenue. And they're wondering if the lighting on the stairs could be fixed because it's very dark there. And is it too late in the season to flush the stairs to wash them? Because there's, like, it smells really bad there. And they're wondering if that could get, because they still use the stairs. I mean, so do the unhoused and the homeless, but you know, people still use those stairs and it's very, they don't feel very safe when there's no lighting and they're just wondering if that's a possibility to get them washed as well.
Thank you, sir. I do understand that we have a staircase lighting revitalization program ongoing. I'm not sure where in the schedule Tadnak sits, but I'm not certain as to whether or not that area has been flushed, but I understand we do clean the stairs at specific intervals as well when we go through them.
Okay, great.
And, and we can look into that. It is noted that sometimes when you have a set of stairs that are already used by the bulk of population, that in, when we name the lighting, that they tend to damage some of it. Sometimes it can be an ongoing, you fix it, but then it's proved afterwards.
Yeah.
That particular set of stairs, the electrical box where they take the power front was vandalized probably for the third time.
Okay.
So it's, it's a little bit of, it's locked, but it keeps getting damaged, so.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, it's a repeat, yeah, for sure.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Jared, for your report, for everybody's reporting. And we'll move on to Chris, uh, um. So beat news.
Thank you, your worship, uh, under key accomplishments, I completed the Local Government Management Association Certificate Program on improving officer training for subdivisions. Uh, it's now brings its role entirely in-house. Um, under operational updates, I met with the RDKB Building Services, uh, reviewing our building current process with them and exploring opportunities to bring partial plan reviews in-house or specific zoning compliance. And a development permit requirements check, uh, that's our opportunity to, to secure the development there. Um, I have also started officially tracking current zoning issues and opportunities within a redline version of these bylaw, which will likely come forward in the new year in the form of an amendment by law. Uh, on that note, with new OCP policy in the draft stages, I'll be identifying areas where we can directly update our zoning bylaw after OCP adoption. Uh, essentially in line with policy changes under the OCP. Uh, I worked with communication staff on a website update for the OCP webpage, uh, revising language and accessibility. While adding a specifically, uh, project webpage for project information reports and upcoming engagement information. Uh, the intent for this update, uh, was to create a landing page with all of the total project information easily accessible to the public. Um, it also allows us to post current or upcoming engagement materials while keeping past reports open to the public. Uh, on another note, I've received one application for rezoning to permit, to permit, uh, short-term vacation rentals as a principal use on a residential property. I'm setting the application up for a three-week furl period, um, so council will see this early in the new year. Uh, on to capital project updates for the OCP, um, we are working with the consultant through ongoing changes to the first draft. Prior to the December, uh, consideration of council. Notable improvements, uh, since September amendments began include setting up a definition section, creating a standalone temporary use permit section, uh, with associated policies. Implementing tax-based supportive housing policy, refining development permit area triggers and exemptions, and finally creating policy on, uh, an industrial development permit area. The OCP open house was held on November seventeenth, this event will be hosted a total of seventeen interactive and informational. Uh, informational boards for the public, uh, and this was at the Aquatic Center multipurpose room. Uh, this was open to the public from four to seven P M and was accompanied by the free swim at pool. At this event, a hundred forty-one people attended, there was lots of feedback, um, and this event is being used to essentially refine draft policy areas in the current draft. Uh, the OCP survey launched November thirteenth and serves as our second early-stage survey to the public since this project launched. And this survey is set to close three weeks from its opening, which will be on December fourth.
Thank you. Any questions, councillor Hanson?
Thank you, thank you, that's, oh, I can't read that. And just wondering, and just something that's sparked my thought process with S T Rs, um. It will, would there, because of the rules of if you have ten thousand individuals, that it has to be a, uh, primary residence with. Um, a short-term rental as a secondary, um, purpose right now in the city because we do not have ten thousand people, um. Just wondering, is the, you know, conversations and further investigations of amalgamation potentially, what that looks like? Would that therefore affect that ten thousand individual, uh, partner residence with S T Rs, if, if you've seen anything come up with that, I just something that was. Lingering as.
Through the chair, I, I haven't actually even processed my career, but, uh, considering the population would increase ten thousand, we would need to reopen the zoning bylaw and make sure that. Essentially the regulations align with the new, new population.
Just thinking.
Yes, well, we didn't think of a word, I hear you.
Yeah, thank you.
Councillor Martin.
Councillor Benson and myself are looking forward to working with you on the accessibility committee.
Yes, that's true, and I did run into a committee member there and I did promise for early January, maybe February, we're, we're trying to get it going, there's been. A lot of onboarding, so it didn't slow the, slowed the race.
We've heard. Thank you.
Okay, is there any other questions? Right, we'll move on to, um. The holiday schedule for December twenty twenty-five, sorry, what's going on? Ben.
Ben is, is here, he kind of handed off this. He's doing a presentation based on.
I don't know where I fall in the next year.
Okay, my father, did you want to talk about this, um, holiday schedule for December?
Um, thank you, through the chair, I think it's self-explanatory for this year, we're just looking for that week, uh, ahead of Christmas to have those three days off. Um, of course, those employees that do not have time or need to work, rather than happy. Are, are able to, we don't force people to take the time off. Um, and then in order for this not to come to council every single year, I have proposed new policy. If council is interested, you know, I mean, looking at that, any amendments that they see.
Hey, thank you. Any questions before we move on to the recommendations? Oh, okay, the first recommendation is that, um, council authorized the closure of City Hall on Monday, December twenty-second. Tuesday, December twenty-third and Wednesday, December twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five. All those in favor? Thank you, that was carried. And we have, uh, one more recommendation on that, and that is council-approved policy number P D zero zero seven three. The annual winter holiday affected, um, twenty twenty-six. All those in favor? Thank you, that was carried. Uh, we do have a report here from the Trail Health and Environment Committee, it's the Funding Management Services Agreement. Uh, now this agreement is because I sit on that committee, I can talk about it, um. It has been going since twenty eleven and the city of Trail has received an annual funding from Tech Metals to support the contracted program. Management services for the Trail Health and Environment Committee. And this agreement is due to expire at the end of December and tech has indicated they wish to continue. The arrangement for twenty twenty-six. And they proposed terms of twenty twenty-six remain pretty much the same as twenty twenty-five, nothing fully, fully changed on that. Is there any other questions, councillor Hanson?
Thank you, through the chair, um, was there ever a conversation, is it, I, I feel like this comes up. Every year, it's, uh, would there be a longer term? You know, I, I don't foresee the Trail Health and Environment Committee going anywhere anytime soon, so would there be an opportunity to. Provide, uh, to have conversations of a longer term, um, agreement as opposed to this coming every year.
It's a great question, and so that's something that we can certainly flow back to the parties and just see, is there interest in doing that?
Thank you.
Okay, is there any other questions, we'll move on to the, uh, recommendations. The first one is that council endorsed the renewal of the agreement between the City of Trail and Tech Metals Limited. To fund the coordination and support of the Trail Health and Environment Committee for twenty twenty-six. All those in favor? That was carried, thank you. And that council endorsed the Trail Health and Environment Committee, whoops. Coordinated Services Agreement between the City of Trail and Convene Consulting. Incorporated and that the Chief Administrative Officer and the General Manager of Corporate Services be authorized to execute that agreement. Do I make that motion? All those in favor? Okay, that was carried. Hey, Mr. McClure, on to the twenty twenty-six utility rate.
Yeah, and, um, I'm hoping it would be okay with council if we have the chief presenters that are here, uh. You know, we know that Craig sort of does, yes, he's responsible for basically the day-to-day operations with utilities, yes, he's involved in some capital components, but we do have, um. Mr. Johnson here as well, uh, helping us as in the engineering component, as we does take on sort of those, working with contractors and the point repairs and then looking into what the future looks like for. Uh, the, um, in such a form or the, uh, yeah, lining and place program that we do for sewer utility amongst other projects. So, um, I'm not sure who's up first or who you guys have brought papers to me for. But I will let them present to us and I think we can have it up on the screen or on your screen of this, as you can get your zoom.
Why don't I go first then? So, yeah, as Colin said, um. Part of, part of my job or my new role in engineering wasn't just demolitions this year, there is some capital work that was through council as well. Um, so just highlighting some of those projects and what that means for us moving forward, uh, as a city as we. Build up our infrastructure so that it lasts to the future. Um, this is not necessarily for you to read or see, it's just a general idea of, um. Taking an, an area in town to Shaver's Bench, uh, which we. Aligned a number of critical areas, uh, where the sewers had failed or they couldn't be lined based on, um, spot failure in the holes and pipes or. Benching saggs, whatever it was. Uh, so we worked with the consultant to put out a tender, we had a number of interested parties, uh, and we settled on, uh, cop can to assist us with this work. Uh, they were great to work with. Through this process, we did ten repairs, ten spot repairs, uh, we replaced four manholes in place with, uh. Pre-benching to eliminate a lot of the flow issues in a flat area town. Uh, we replaced waterline crossings through those roadways so that we don't have to dig those back up when we go to do future work, which eliminated some asbestos concrete pipe. Um, and put some valves in at the same time to try and make that system a little robust moving forward. So some of these are just the pre-fotos, um, you can see it varies in, in depth and what we're dealing with. Uh, if you look below the excavator, that's actually a, it's hard to see, but that's a sewer pipe of our. Put below, put our foot not below the ground there, so we made sure that one died down deeper, so when we go back there, we can eliminate that shallow pipe. Um, this is some of the new work as it's put in, uh, manholes and water crossings and as you can kind of see, hopefully into that manhole, it's all pre-cast basis, so it just helps. Where we just had, uh, poured in place or formed manholes from the fifties, these ones are, they're poured concrete, so the flow is much better. Uh, which improves, it, or reduces issues moving forward for us.
And Mincher, uh, was it Jones, just to, for council, because even on your first slide, you had sort of green piping versus blue piping and it maybe seems. Logical, but the, the, the blue piping is for water and green piping is for, obviously for sewer and, um, and. But that, as you look, even the other ones that we'll be looking at, we didn't kind of mark it that way, this is sort of a new product, but this is the standard that so in case someone was digging or looking at, they would be able to very quickly tell. If it's a new stuff that you're dealing with a, a water pipe.
Yeah, so as, as Colin says, the, the green is the PVC, which is our sewer, um, and the blue is, it's called C nine hundred. And it's pressurized, so that's our, our water main, so they're different, uh, different composites, different pressure that they're used for, obviously the sewer's not pressurized, so it doesn't fire at the same capacity.
And there's also, uh, an elevation, so if you have sewer and water connecting with each other, you can't have the sewer above the water, makes sense.
Uh, this is, uh, this is two of the repairs or this is the same repair looking across the alley and back down, uh, further down the road, you can see there was another one, so these were major crossings in Shaver's Bench, uh, that we'd. Uh, noticed were, were critical areas that we wanted to disorganize, so that was part of our sewer collection rehab spot repairs project. Uh, the other major capital works project we had through these two utility areas, uh, was the Fifth Bat Hill Shaver's Bench. Uh, and again, this was a collapsed line that we couldn't repair through trenchless, it required digging. Um, so while we were in there, we outlined that the storm was also a little underwhelming for what was, what it needed in that space. Uh, so we replaced the storm line through there as well as another water crossing in that intersection that if we go back to do future work, we don't have to dig the road up again. Um, and then we had to replace the section of sidewalk. Down at the bottom, uh, repaved landscaping and, uh, the line painting wasn't completed when I took this photo, but it is now, so. Uh, I'm happy to say that those projects went out, uh, I think towards the beginning of October. Uh, and we completed them with pavement on the ground and done before the end of the year, so. And that's all I have for those two projects, if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
And as we talked before, council, this will be sort of the, uh, plan work, you saw the, the chart and the ones that we did, so those spot repairs. Those get completed in one year, following year, yes, there could be some other spot repairs, but the goal is to spend that time on getting the. The sections now that can get completely, uh, re-lined, yeah, without having to dig, you can see how deep those holes are as well, and then of course, the biggest cost actually is the paving. Major factor, so appreciate that forward thinking of, hey, we have the pipe on there now, so I can do it, that we're not having to.
So we're, um, those, uh, projects done on budget, they've worked and come on budget?
Uh, that's, uh, my understanding is yes, they have, yes.
Good project. Go ahead.
Thank you, um, and so how many are identified for twenty twenty-six of these kind of specific targeted areas along. Beyond the realigning of the sewers?
Uh, yes, through the chair, there were fourteen that we looked at as part of the spot repair, uh, we have ten of them complete, so we do have one in the spring that we'd like to get back to, but, uh, that. Currently I'm putting together a tender that looks at about a kilometer, uh, one point three kilometers of lining work that is now capable because of those repairs.
Awesome. Okay.
Yeah, no, thank you, thank you.
Yes, thank you so much.
See Craig, I think you're coming up, so I don't have to drive it or Ben saying you up.
Oh, pretty.
You can really stuff, might give me jungle on my fingers, but. All right, so, um, as I just hit the thing, we get, let's get that, but anyways. Just, uh, just want to talk about preventive maintenance being proactive, um, as opposed to the capital side, um, of projects. Um, just kind of why preventive maintenance matters, this is what we do, what we want to focus on more. Um, enhances system reliability, protects public health, extends its structural lifespan. Supports regulatory compliance. Um, the idea is we want to identify problems and fix them before they become a, an emergency repair. And that's, that's our goal through preventive maintenance. So we'll start with the water system maintenance. So, um, heard me talk a lot about unidirectional flushing, U D F. And as you can see by the photo on the top. Yeah, that's tuberculation, it's not, it's actually quite a, you know, common site on old water mains. So unidirectional flushing actually takes that out, it scours the inside of the pipe and cleans it. So. Cleanse water distribution increases hydraulic capacity, you can see the diameter, how much it shrunk. So you think of fire flows, uh, and how much of a reduction in. Low and hydraulic capacity that would be. Um, enhances chlorine residual in the areas that we do chlorinate. That's rough surface, um, traps, could trap microorganisms potentially. And what that does, it takes more chlorine in the system to disinfect it and heat it up, so you, we use more. So if you have a clean pipe, it doesn't stick, it's clean and clear, so. Enhances system performance for the same reasons, and the big thing is it identifies system deficiencies by flushing. Um, we can tell if the valves that we turn, we've had to exercise over two hundred valves this year just to make this happen and direct the flow where we want it. Broken valves, valves that were closed that should have been open, could have been a past water main break, guys are working twenty-four hours straight, they're tired, they miss one. All the systems are looped, so we don't know, there's no complaints, but, so we identify those things. And that brown water coming out of the thing, don't be alarmed, that's not what it looks like, that's when you open up a hydrant, it's just rust in the barrel and. Looks worse than this one. So if you go to the, this slide, that's what we get out of a. The system that's knocking all those little pores and. And the rough surface out, so we, you get a handful of that sometimes, you can hear it coming out of the hydrant. So. The scope and findings of the program, um, extensive valve cycling, as I mentioned, we cycle two hundred. We've, this valve right here was, uh, it broke while we were going to, um. We've, this valve right here was uh, it broke while we were going to um basically exercise the valve and divert water in one direction. So it broke. So now it becomes an emergency and this is when the bell is replaced in that case. So that's a deficiency. Um, another section of preventive maintenance is valve, the valve exercise program. We have a truck set up. It'll drop down. It'll hydraulically turn the valve back and forth. If you've ever had to manually do this, it's quite labor intensive. You literally get your exercise. Um, and this valve, this program is great. The flaw is it does break belts. We find old stuff that just breaks and then all of a sudden it's a panic. We got to fix it. So the city trail has over a thousand watering belts. We only want to do about twenty-five percent per year. Otherwise, we wouldn't be able to keep up on the repairs. Uh, this was a capital project. We just took this transfer pump out on Tuesday, last Tuesday. So that's just an old bird's eye view of the uh twin pumps. And electric motor coming off. Went too far, sorry. Um, I usually have a mouse and anyways, it was flying through the air, but I missed it. So and then now it's landed. They probably for it. Yeah. So this is getting sent out for inspection and repair um in the open. The twelve inch water valve insert, um, this valve is key even to the work band head down in Shaver's Bench. We've cycled it five times this year, isolated this section of water main. So it was a good investment for the city to have this installed. Um, and we have a little peace of mind that we can shut down the water band. And what size is that one? Oh, sorry. That's, that's a twelve inch. Yeah. And they, like you said, they do this live. It's quite the procedure. If you got to see it, it's pretty interesting. Yeah, I keep doing that. So um, where are your money spent and why we do preventive maintenance? These are watering failures. As you can see how devastating they are if they're big. Um, that was just a Charles Lakes Drive. I mean, that's probably well over a hundred thousand dollars to prepare. Of all, just with all the damage. So we want to prevent these from happening in the first place. Um, that's the twelve inch on Roslyn F, the cast that was happening this year. You can see the big fracture. And uh, houses a lot of damage as well. That's Charles Lakes Drive. So that, that's the hole that it left. Place it was quite devastating for sure. This is a little more proactive work. That pile of valves and pipe on the ground is what we pulled out, non-functioning. What you see on the right is what we put in. So that's just a little proactive work. The water system still works, but we wouldn't be able to shut it down.
You use a rubber gasket uh in between because you've got the blue pipes there and you want to look so far. Then is it going back on to?
Yeah.
So that's sort of the tool that you're using?
Yeah, it's a high max coupler. So you can join two, two pipes together of different sizes, you know, laws are within range. So, and that was the water system. Now we got sewer maintenance. So that fine looking truck on the left um is our backer truck. It never stops. It goes all the time. So what it's about is uh inspection and cleaning techniques. Manhole and sewer main video inspections, jet rotting, flushing. So that truck right now, that was just up here um above city hall. We were flushing water mains or sorry sewer mains um to prevent blockages. So that's on our three month list. We just keep every three months, we go through this sequence, looking at that manhole. There's already a deficiency. You can see there's a hole in the side. The old bricks grumble. So that's what we're doing as we go in there. We're inspecting and making a repair list as well. That's kind of a downscaled version of our vector nozzle. What it does is it'll pull the holes up with those rear facing jets. And poke a hole with the front, front facing. And then when you pull it back, it cleans the pipe. And kind of a cross sectional view of um being roots in a service line. So yeah, prevention of blockages, variety defect detection, improves flow efficiency and public health because we don't want sewer flowing all over the ground. Fog, that's bad oil grease. So this isn't an exaggeration. That's what you find. So all that stir fry grease and a little pan that everyone dumps down the sink. That's what happens. And what it does, you get a block, you get a backup in your house. It can go in the vein, cause a backup and issues to your neighbors. So that's why we don't recommend doing that. And it happens. And the bottom photo is a loophole. So that's also what we're figuring out. Um, I just thought I'd talk about the trenchless relining. It's a little bit of a video of them pulling a liner through the old repurposing sewer line. And then they expand it with the compressed uh gas or air on the right hand photo. Then they pull a UV light through it and that's what hardens the, treat, you know, hardens the liner. And then on the right, there's a little tool that goes down and it actually cuts out the service line. Yeah. So we're gaining another fifty years approximately by redoing this or relining it. And you don't have to dig the street up. Sewer lift station maintenance, um. It's gonna work for me. There we go. Inspection and maintenance. So more preventive stuff. We inspect. We have pump inspection operation, electrical and control system checks, wet well cleaning, dry well inspection, iron wall level alarm. So we do this weekly, monthly and annually is a, a bigger inspection, of course. We actually pull the pumps, inspect the impellers to make sure there's something left to actually bump them. So the benefits reduce pump failures, enhance system reliability, environmental protection, cost savings in planning. Um, yeah, it just reduces the amount of capital if we look after this stuff correctly while it's in use. And conclusion. So the importance of preventive maintenance prevents preventive maintenance ensures reliable water and sewer protects public health, optimizes infrastructure investment. The twenty twenty five flushing program success, the unidirectional flushing program improved the value of belts, of belt cycling and replacement. Sewer lift station care, um. The sewer inspections, jet rotting and lift station maintenance, reliable, um, sorry, no. Lose my voice here. Um, reliable and environmental safety. So the future maintenance strategies, continue developing preventive maintenance strategies and repairs based on findings. And yeah. Any questions? Everyone's awake. Yes, we are.
Any questions? No?
Just thank you. Yeah.
Thank you very much. Have a good day.
Thank you guys. I'm still sharing.
Oh, Ben, can you even still share his script?
Now the fun part.
Yeah, exactly. Well, uh, I think, council, I think this is important educational wise uh for not only those on the table, but those that are watching and are paying watch uh to get a sense of well, what all is involved. You see that back to truck and all the different functions that it has and has uh, it is the most used piece of equipment um municipality. So I just kind of take a moment here and I'll hand out some anything, spreadsheets, because I know that um I know that's difficult to see. Hopefully not wasting because Tom's playing by providing these in the sense that uh. We, so I'll show you my screen here. So when we last met, um, we discussed a few uh different options, I've made a bit of work. And I think where I may start. I would just go through this particular document first and we can ask some questions, go to some of the samples that I provided. So I had a few proposals that I came up with and um so I've given you the sheets and so I started to mark down the bottom, then which spreadsheets are for which. And when we had met last, um, I was the boy in ten, so I'm increased to water rates. Um, there was a relocation of fifty K of the wall, the tax contribution from sewer to water. Uh, and then there was the rolling in of the one fifty, a single company wanting water parcel tax into the bottom rate. And then eliminating that water proxy tax in the twenty twenty six taxes, I did kind of say there's a potential for ten, about ten percent uh decrease. Uh, if uh those, when they get the utility rate goes here in January, if they're pulling for the deadline, which is the word. So in a sense, even if you, you might get a save it, you give, you get a savings over the possible tax. If you do pay by the due date, um, and if you don't, then you just basically be even as far as possible tax coming off your taxation and the one fifty that were, were. Uh, certainly was uh noting that we had talked about proposing a zero percent increase in twenty twenty six sewer rates. And the effect of these rates are in spreadsheet E uh to F, E being the water and F being sewer. Now, a couple of things came, became apparent when I did this particular leader. Uh, one was that um, when I had set up the spreadsheet to signify the removal or the re-allocation, I should say, of the taxing that we had had from water and sewer. I noticed that my spreadsheet actually wasn't actually picking it up in the first place. So when I was doing those adjustments, uh, the twenty-six thousand that was remaining kind of in, in the sewer system actually wasn't heavy, not a big amount, but it does affect as we know that compound a component. And that's what you see now with that twenty-six thousand. It was actually uh creating quite a large reserve in um in the sewer run uh as compared to something I got through. We will see uh because that twenty-six thousand hadn't been included. And now it was, and that was even including the zero percent increase. So so this, that was option sort of one was coming back to you and saying, Ben, I've now got a numbers bracket and we've got the water at ten percent in twenty twenty six and in twenty twenty-seven, and then we started to drop down. You'll see that in spreadsheet uh E. So gonna go not hoping to move on to the next set of proposals because it's, I'm thinking that based on my understanding of council, less is paid will be more. So proposal two. Um, so what I looked at in proposal two was a couple of things. One is it would be a proposal of nine percent increase in water rates in twenty twenty-six. And then also a nine percent in twenty twenty-seven. So basically eighteen over those two years is one way of sort of giving a bit of a break this year on the water. Know that we're still having the zero percent in sewers and that helps. Uh, but it also helps for whoever was sitting in these seats in twenty twenty um, really twenty twenty-six and twenty twenty-seven, because you're now kind of less pressure based on this model um on what the rate increase would be next year. So that's the way that I kind of looked at it. And these spreadsheets for these are uh G for water and H for sewer. But the other component that I did is that I said, well, if the effect is such that one six thousand that was remaining tax contribution in the sewer system has moved over to the water system. That's where you kind of get the benefit of being able to move from ten percent to nine or nine and not in two years. Um, so that was one of the benefits that I saw very quickly, that you still have a very healthy reserve and basically funding itself at that, you know, inflationary type range of two points and five, one, four, even though currently there's add zero. Um, that that reserve is in a healthy place. If we don't have any tax contribution to it and we know that water is the one that needs the love and we've been making that, that movement. And so I felt comfortable saying, well, here's an option for council, not only a zero, but no task contribution still provides a reserve as it goes along that is uh, is healthy and is basically the increase that we were looking at each year, the, the capital work that we're planning on doing is basically very balanced, very balanced if we, if we were to do that. What this also allows under the G spreadsheet for water is you have less pressure on the taxpayer for uh twenty twenty-six and twenty twenty-seven. But you also see that the five then drops to four percent in about twenty thirty-two. So we actually are starting to, you start to see the benefit. You're seeing that even in some of the previous year's spreadsheets that we have looked at, the reserve balance, I would say, four or five years is down in the sixty thousand or a hundred thousand. It's as much higher, in a much safer place as we are going along. And as we get out a few more years and part of the factors on that will also be the good water that is coming off in another couple of years. So that need of having rates that cover the water debt will come off and that will allow that to be available for the capital contribution. So that was one option that I was looking at. And again, on that particular one, uh, although we'll look at this spreadsheet a little bit differently because I think that it's sort of unfair when I use it for current spreadsheet where it's saying you're going from six fifty-eight to four seventy-seven at this one. That's a hundred eighty-one dollar change. That's thirty-eight percent change. Monthly change is fifteen dollars. What's going wrong here? But we'll get a better visual here when I compare the options of what happens at a ten, nine and eight percent add today for the water fund because it's hard to see the, the water uh parcel tax coming out and then just the raise of increase happening. With, with the rain increase that hundred fifty being added in there. So that's, that's one uh option that I thought council would probably be more interested in. And then the, the final proposal um would be and then proposal number three uh is an eight percent in twenty twenty-six, but then I still need to have ten percent in twenty twenty-seven. So you kind of, so it's kind of kind of balancing. What is the council wants to look at that this year? And we know that we have some pressure. We also know that at the end of the year, when we have, when we look at things, if we put any surplus council as willing, it sort of help out the water fund. It's also something that we may consider as we get into budget year end kind of allocations for reserves if we need them, depending on where the, where the year ends up. So again, this here is proposing a ten percent, a sort of eight percent increase in water rates for twenty twenty-six. It's a reallocation of, of all of the remaining tax contributions from sewer to the water. Uh, as the, the elimination of the water parcel tax, but rolling with the rates. And again, continuing on with a zero percent increase in sewer rates. You'll notice that this is spreadsheet I, so your last spreadsheet, uh, the two uh sewer spreadsheets should change later in the same. So we're just basically going on the deal. Again, after hours, you are seeing again that you're, you've got, yes, an eight percent to get a bit of a break this year, moving at a ten percent. We're now going, we'll, we'll always revisit that as we always do at this time of year. Um, and uh, but looking at needing a ten percent for, for twenty twenty-seven, but then dropping to five. And then again, same thing when you're dropping down to four. And when you started getting a little close for the capital is producing at a, at a level that the rates are not only funding the water, but then it's funding that capital and it's, you're in place. So it's, it's actually when I look at our first original spreadsheets from a few years ago, we've really come a long way. And that's again, I think courageous for for councils to be able to be the ones in front. You will see the work that's happening with staff. With an audit set, you know, sewer is one thing since we play healthy, we've got a good plan there, but water a bit more intricate. Oh, as councils aware, we own the water plant and we own the transmission and distribution, whereas on the sewer side, we've got our partners at R D K B that and Warfield and Roslyn that assist with the uh sewer treatment plant, which is going underneath a significant upgrade. Warfield and Roslyn that assist with the sewer treatment plant, which is going underneath a significant upgrade. I did talk to some of my counterparts, both the Casador and Nelson, and that is something that is weighing very heavily on them. Pressure that is coming in particularly Casador, they spent quite a sum of money to deal with. Oler issue with, so the treatment of their sewage treatment plant and they have two plants. And so they are looking at some very expensive. Improvements, much in the same way that. RDKB and as the the three partners, the three municipality partners looked at. You know, a project that was a fifty million ended up being seventy five million. But those are the sorts of price tags that are that plus. As you know, as they are putting money aside or having to deal with their. Sewer treatment plant issues and so we're really going to see some pressure on some of our partners. And so it's, it's again, just sometimes one of those things, you know, like, well, how come they're a bit lower than we are? It's like, well, they may be now, but they're also not the ones that are at the forefront of a brand new sewage treatment plant upgrade that's going to last fifty to a hundred years. And a couple without it, just our water system as well. Now, water not as. Toxic as the obviously anonymous materials that get a flow through as a sewage treatment plant, so a little bit easier on that side. But nevertheless, sort of an ongoing and consistent increase of regulations by the province as well. And then I know that our sewage treatment, sorry, water treatment plant is has had, is is pretty new, but we know that there's more demands coming and more. Needs and improvements to the water system as well. So that'll be, I all of those, I think, the, the, the two options, so which would be. G and I really sort of speak to that ending bounce and trying to know that we've had a real upfront lift here and starting to see that start to increase. As we go forward and the other means. Features would be that we're having the. Water master plan update, which will help us with our priorities, not only to our plant, but to other, there it's pump stations. One of the needs that we need to be looking at and of course, when you see some of that galvanized pipe, that's one that is older. Some of the cast iron as well, crack like that, not uncommon, especially when you have. Changes in temperature, we've been pretty fortunate, the last couple of years ago, we've had some breaks. It's when, and again, part of that was a factor that we, whether or not I had bought snow, but I know when we recalls, we had about a ten day window there last year that it was. Really cold and that's one of those factors that really tends to move inside the ground. And if these pipes have not been laid properly or have a proper bedding as they are now required to do by the standard. That's where these things, these items crack the break and of course, using the. New upgraded type of piping, it's tended to last a lot longer again, we did a, the, the previous. And normal and regularly used cast iron or. Other types of materials that are used for water. So I tried to lay this out as a little bit more visual. And so this is sort of goes. This is for a single family dwelling and this would be a single family dwelling that would have a one to one ratio. So if you've got someone that has a home. And they were paying the water rate and they were paying a parcel tax, taking away that parcel tax. And we are adding it to the rate. So this is before any discounts, so just try to be, you know, clear on this. But you could see that with no increase to sewer, we don't know what's going to happen with the RDKB. But in my contact with the CEFO there, their goal is to have minimal, you know, no types of major jumps that we had last year, which was huge. So taking that into consideration, the water rate goes from seven one seven under ten percent to five fifteen. So that's a job of a hundred, two hundred and two dollars. And then that water parcel tax is coming in. You can see in twenty twenty five, your rate would include, not call in there, would have included the parcel tax. Twenty twenty six, it does not. And you've got no change in sewer and I don't know, but I'm not expecting a big change in the RDKB portion. So you can see that the, the difference, the annual increase would be about fifty two dollars. So you are looking at about four, four dollars and twenty five cents per month, sort of change under a ten percent. On proposal. Same idea here, again, with nine percent, you can see that that factor is forty six dollars is the change. The word twenty twenty six over twenty twenty five. And then you look, if we go at eight percent, you're at forty one dollars. So you know, again, I'm using round figures, I mean, it could be forty one dollars and twenty five cents or whatever that is, I'm just saying to you. But the idea here is that it kind of gives you a visual on. What the cost for the utilities for a single family dwelling will be based on the proposals that I have provided. So I think it's also important for us to look at our regional water and sewer rate comparators, because I know that that can be sometimes a conversation that we have. Raro's grocery store or Safeway or at the hockey game, or where that you're attending. One of the things that can be even difficult as well is that. Casador maybe listen, well, they're really quite low or or lower than the rest of the groups. But this also, they're on meters, so sometimes it's a bit difficult to understand that assumption. And they have not gotten down the road for where they're actually going to be. But this was sort of a high level, you know, this is what we think is going to happen. Again, all of these are always proposed until council approves them. So it's one of those situations where, I mean, you know, does it, does it end up being that at the end of the year? Not sure, because it's going to be other pressures for each community. But confident Nelson's already proposed theirs to their council and looking through it. We can see that they've got an eight percent in their water system and a five percent in their sewer. Eighty three dollar increase from proposing our single family dwelling. They city of Nelson is like the city of Trail where for residential, there's it's a flood rate. And then you go down to Rosland. Where they sort of had a benefit and I think we talked about it before, that they had some additional funding that they put towards. Trying to take the pressure off of that large increase that we had in twenty twenty five for the RDKB. You can see that that's starting to come home today when you look at the, the sewer for RDKB going from two hundred forty eight to four oh eight. Again, these are all proposed numbers presented to council. I will say that although it looks like the, the water number is up sixteen percent, that's inaccurate. I found out that the number that they ended up at the end of twenty twenty five ended up being higher, but I didn't have that at the time of my publishing. So it is, it's more of a ten percent, a ten percent for the water. System and then they are also trying to deal with that significant increase and with them sort of balancing it out in twenty twenty five. Six. Much like. You know, community did in twenty twenty five last year. So you can see overall, Roslyn, you know, they've got some really major infrastructure. So they're trying to deal with the net, their numbers up there as well at a ten percent. And that's so that water rate should be a ten percent, not sixteen, so that's a mistake. Our publishing before I had final. And then we even have the city of Trail, meaning we're not far off of where Roseland is at. And not again, not far off of where the city of Nelson is at and the city of Passador. Their numbers because of meters a bit harder, but they are also really in a. Going to be in a very challenging places for their sewage treatment plant, so their operations are volatile. It's going to be into the future. So again, just one of those things that I thought was important, I feel that was where councils act and what we've already committed to, we're actually in a pretty good spot. And you know. The heavy lifting is and it always has been done, and so if we can get this year and then another year, I think that we're going to end up in a place where we're dropping back down into a much more reasonable rate increase. And and you're also going to have funds available to be able to do the capital effort that that is coming. I think just. Maybe some updates as it didn't call me on some of my grammatical errors, but one of my other quotes. So I, so I updated some of my language in here. When we talked about the water master plan and where that's going to be and how we're, that's going to be a key gap. The city moving forward, making sure that you're prior organizing and finding your. Where's the, where's, what piece of pipe or where the water treatment plant need to upgrade? Definitely, we're looking at twenty twenty six, the phase one of Charles Lake. We know that there's still some planning to be done there and it is one that we're also in a sort of weird spot there as far as how do we get that timing wise though? Because the last thing I want to do is go bull hog. If you don't know, if you've got the grant, so you know, one of those things of when do we find out we'll be successful in our grant application? And yet been. Confident with the manager utilities is saying, you know, we have a bunch of planning work that still needs to be done to this project and so timing wise it should be. Not making, having to make a decision before we find out if we get the grant. Now, if we make it the grant, that changes a lot of things in our projects. In same, same brand, that's where if we don't, we are, we are move forward with the idea that we are able to take on this project. If we don't, if, if there are. If we do get the grant, fantastic, but we also know probably other costs coming as particular. But it will help us immensely in the, the pressure for the reserve itself. Got a couple carried forwards and we're also pleased to hear that duty, that we've got that out and we've got it out in a time when. Sort of quieting down for those that are on the, the engineering side of our large. Because this is a large project, so you don't have a lot in our area of those contractors that can do that type of work. So really nice to be having something that they can be looking at at a timeframe when they're mapping out twenty twenty six work. And if we can get in there and get the pricing here, get there's projects in line, so not only is the timing good for us. But that when you're not trying to ask a contractor who's already kind of booked in twenty twenty six, went to now said, hey, can you take on this project? So feeling very comfortable about that. Then again, just my, my recommendation of, you know, putting that additional money into the sewer water age, promise utility to the water. Again, we saw some of those great photos and I think it's always really important that I'm able to have a thousand words, just how deep those trenches are, the work that we are doing. Really pleased that our staff are being proactive, really not proactive this year. Doesn't mean that we don't get a break, but that we're looking at, let's get this valve in so that if we have an issue at a certain part of our community, we don't have to shut. Two or three hundred homes off the water, we can really start to isolate those into a much smaller. Block of the community, which again, I think speaks well for not only the pride of thinking, but just as a community member. If I didn't need to have my water turned off because and you now put in the tools to make that happen. That's a big value for our, for our community. And then there's a couple of small things even for on the side with me getting a sewer camera as we talked about being able to see what you get to see. Fog and otherwise in, in our sewer line, so that's an important piece. And that just seems to be the communications equipment, there was some conversation about that and one of the things that we, he kind of blew through it a bit, but I, I. I think in the first year of council was available, we did show sort of that spread, like, you know, what does the water system look like? Really, we got Barrett Creek, but they got a water treatment plant, we got Charles Lake, we've got the different pumping stations. And I think that's again, another document that I would hope that as we go into more budget conversations, that we provide some of that information, not only for councils or refresher, but for the community as well. Just to understand the complexity and how we handle shutdowns because we can deal with. You know, closing down with the water treatment plant did have an issue because we bought Bear Creek in the same way Bear Creek to. To the water treatment plant. So that's the end of my. Presentation for tonight on utilities and was really helping. Because of the timing and, you know, we. Seen so much, what cautiously optimistic that Canada will. Continue, continue on, although they, they did make a very big caveat that they signed for the invincible, but if we don't get invincible, then. Strike could be on, so it's a bit unnerving. Well, like last previous years, we would be looking at coming back December eighth. And I would like, if we can either by resolution or by direction, kind of get. Guidance from council on what they would want to see and, and, and what proposal they would like to be able to consider. And we will obviously bring forward those rates. For that different meaning on December eighth will be the plan and shortly thereafter have a, a. You know, a short council meeting to be able to have adoption so that we're kind of prepared well. Council gets to enjoy, you know, communities, if you like Christmas time, some of our staff, when we here, maybe they don't have the vacation time. We'll, we'll put them under the gun and having to get all of the folding in for the invoices for water and sewer utilities.
Oh, sorry, not so fancy, go ahead.
Thank you, and thank you so much for your work on this, Mr. Mather, and I, I think, you know. Being able to take some of that money while having a healthy sewer, put it towards water, as we know that that's very, very important based on what we've learned and. Actually having a new water master plan to be able to identify really the urgent things that need to be done. We can see, you know, as Mr. Spears talked about all of the preventative things, the maintenance things. You know, I, I would be very. You know, with having a zero percent increase in sewer. You know, I think the nine percent is reasonable based on the fact that you're kind of splitting it and the difference between both sides. And that you're still, you know, and, and that may potentially be something that we can change depending on what kind of surplus we have at the end of the year. And maybe that nine ends up getting us to more of an eight based on the fact that we've got money that we can sit and that nine percent for next year potentially could be even less.
And I wouldn't, just to be clear, that would be, once we go to the year end, you would only be affecting twenty twenty seven rates. So we, we, once we decide.
Making it less for next year as opposed to.
Yes.
Doing two years of ten and not spending that many tons.
Anybody else?
And I noticed in some of the other communities, because I've gone in and looked at their minutes. But a few of them are putting in three year proposals, you know. So nine, 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 is that something we would think about or have we ever? Do you know if we've ever done something like that?
Well, certainly have it with me at the end of it. For being on this finance side, it is, even if you did that, it might be to be communicated out to the community, but it is for me, it really is finding it worth it, so. How are we doing? And every year council is aside and what's that? So sometimes it could be like, here's what we're looking at and I feel that we sort of do that with the spreadsheets that I provide, saying, right now, here's what I'm showing council, but this is also. You know, an expectation that we would be a couple of years of higher rates and then we're, we're dropping. And I think if we go back to the ones that we first started, when we started working together, you would see these large numbers and then we're getting down there. Now we're starting to see that work happening and council and just staff working together about. Oh, did you? And to be able to reallocate it, that the idea of, you know, means learning and saying, hey, you know, this is contribution and do we need it in these things? How do we help each other and council being able, as Council Hanson said, say, what does it look like? What if we put two hundred thousand dollars at the end of this year, that if that's allowable into the water fund? So I think that it sort of does the same in some aspects, you might be able to say, maybe it's a preparation, a commitment. But even the commitment is, is sort of false in the sense that, yes, we agree with this, but we want to look at it every year. You don't know what else.
Yeah, you definitely would have to revisit it.
So I kind of feel that we do something similar, if I figure almost a bit further outgoing. If we keep keeping this sort of program, we're getting that with inflationary.
Anyone else who council? Wants to speak on this council event?
I just feel we get the better answer above the chance. Looking. Future, never not that really. The difference between.
And that's on the single family.
Forty six, yeah.
Six dollars, yeah, I hear you on that.
I just, yeah, just looking at the component.
Probably effect.
Yeah.
And I don't disagree. And again, this is obviously council's decision, but I will say that that idea of looking at what happens as we hit the year end here and being able to touch that. I feel confident that there, there's a potential for. For the ability to that and that's caveat and on how does the white snow fall sort of. So I get that there's some risk there, but I, I do feel confidence that the nine with a potential of a touch. Towards a reserve in twenty twenty six as we finish year end up. Probably I feel confident that we are, the other side of it as well, yeah, so Benson, is that if we get that. Right, right, yeah. Right, and so, I mean, again, I don't.
No idea when we would hear.
Well, especially with the government, just kind of back to me now. And I'm not sure what pressure they have to get, what they need to get through, but that really they push that decision. So that's one that also, you know, hey, I know it only sounds like six dollars or that is, but we also talk about single family dwelling. We also have to think about those that depague water on the meter, because it's also going to be by that rate, right? So sometimes, yes, we're thinking of residential, but we also got things with the commercial side of things. So it's to consider in your decision making.
Anyone else?
So I think it is prudent to have a resolution on floor tonight so that we can move forward, so. I'm not sure. Who wants to, I think has a motion, but. That he can read out, that we just fill in the, what are we doing, are we doing the nine, are we doing the ten, are we doing the zero? But it would be most helpful to staff if we could have some of that action here.
Absolutely, yeah. I, yeah, I don't know, any of the else from council wants to speak towards the nine or the ten? Also Hanson, you have to hand up.
I was just prepared to make the resolution.
Okay, go ahead.
Please, please massage as needed to.
Please, please massage as needed to make this.
I have it written out. Just based on what the. Options were. Um so this will be in and council will decide on the numbers to fill in the blank and then we can put that motion on the floor. Or on that native. Uh so that council approve an increase of blank percentage to the water utility rates. And blank percentage to the sewer utility rates for twenty twenty six. And further, that a hundred and fifty dollar single family dwelling water parcel tax be removed from the tax notice and be incorporated into the water rate. And further, that capital rec that bringing forward the necessary amending by dot to incorporate the new rates.
May I fill in nine percent for the water? Yeah, fill in the nine percent for the water parcel, zero percent for the sewer and remove the hundred fifty uh dollar parcel tax.
How long did we leave the question? You have time.
The motion for that fifty thousand.
And and that reality.
Yeah, you 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 good one and that that real handy taxes, yeah, great point, Mayor Jones. Yeah.
Yeah. So add further.
And for yeah. And further, we obviously the fifty thousand.
Okay, is there a second or on that option?
We only require a number.
Oh, okay. All those in favor of the nine percent and zero. You know, oh, Councilor Taffel, did you vote? You did? Okay, thank you. Yeah, that was your man.
Thank you. Thanks, Council for your nice hand for uh. You're trusting us with the praise you feel here and it's been, I would say it's been courageous for this council to. To move us to where we are and I really believe that future councils will be appreciative. I hope we've uh backfield are going to have.
Okay, is there any other reports that have uh?
Yeah, mine's actually.
You could do it now and we have um.
Yeah, we do.
Yeah, we have time. That'd be great.
Just to report to council from attendance at the Housing Central Conference, Councilor Hill, stand myself attended. Um I'd like to present a summary of our participation for recently concluded Housing Central Conference. Which is British Columbia's largest gatherings on affordable housing and its thirtieth year and the first to be attended by representatives from trail. The conference was rich in opportunities to deepen our understanding of housing policies, finance and development. And to build strategic relationships with key sector stakeholders. The conference offered practical insights, useful tools and valuable networking opportunities. That directly relate to the challenges we face in advancing local housing problems. Uh over the course of the conference, I attended three sessions. And Council Wilson attended three on his own, separate from mine. With in similar uh sort of style um. Which would have been five, however, our flight consolation consolation delayed our attendance by day. So uh fostering small town partnerships to build housing highlighted successful approaches to you uh used by rural and small communities. Uh the central message was the importance of building strong partnerships. Local government, nonprofits and private builders working in alignment to reduce barriers and accelerate delivery. This resonated strongly with me with the realities throughout our region. Your capacity limitations are often are often still progressing. Second one was blending private capital with uh public purpose. We explored how. Municipalities and nonprofits can work with private investors while safeguarding long term affordability. Examples show that simple. While structured deals often produce the best outcomes and that securing partners early reduces time loss to redesign projects midstream. And uh lastly was the magic recipe, which was uh. Executing community housing development and that provided a practical roadmap from concept to completion. Uh the presenters emphasized disciplined project management. Clear communication and avoiding over complexity over complexity, reinforcing a theme that echoed throughout this conference. In addition to the learning sessions and with several. Knowledgeable sector leaders, including Glenn Pollack of Aurora Housing Society. Who is bringing uh housing societies out to smaller communities where these are proving. Challenges that we have here in Hale finding such organizations. Jeff Brown of North Star Construction. Uh they're based out of Poco and they're building in smaller communities such as um Prince Rupert and Burns Lake. And Khalil Schram of the MAP. Cola Development Services, um each providing insight into how communities can move projects forward. More efficiently by tapping into existing expertise rather than trying to solve. These complex challenges alone. All three are more than willing to present or attend either at committee level or at council level. My primary takeaway is a straightforward, we must simply keep things simple. Projects are failing or dragging on for decades when processes become overly complicated or when communities try to manage everything internally without sufficient support. The contrast between the goal of completing projects within two years. Versus the all too common ten or twenty timeframes was a reoccurring theme. My clearst message from the conference was, we need to keep our housing projects simple and not over engineered and move with a sense of urgency. Too often, the local projects stretch out over ten to twenty years because of complex structures, limited capacity and lack of external support, external support. Locally, this is especially relevant. We see how projects and fruit fail. Where the community initiatives like the Unicorn Daycare have experienced delays in part because they lack access to proven issues around and outside partners. Uh the conference affirmed that bringing in external knowledge and streamline models is not just beneficial, it's rather critical. Uh during the conference, I was lucky enough to participate in a private tour of a development project at the corner of uh Dorard and Davy Street. That's leveraging the Klasnikov modular technology, uh which was actually very cool. The tour gave me first hand insight into how modular systems can reduce onsite construction time limit waste and deliver well engineered structures. Seeing this technology in action reinforced how modular. Uh construction could dramatically improve our housing delivery timelines, something that aligns directly with uh my conference takeaway. Which was building fast, building smart and building in partnership. The conference made it clear that outside knowledge, shared expertise and collaborative partnerships are not optional and essential to our success by keeping projects simpler. Relying on pro proven models and building strong alliances, we can meaningful meaningfully accelerate the delivery. Of community and affordable housing. So the recommendations. To I would have for us as a council of the city is to explore these modular um building options. Um looking into how uh Klasnikov style modular construction could be applied to our local housing projects. Especially the non marketer mixed income. Uh develop a fast track project template, adopt a streamlined project model that aims to complete certain housing developments. Within two or three years. Leveraging. Uh external partners and pre-fabricated components. Uh build it across sector partnerships, so formalize a working group which we've already started with the downtown committee. With nonprofits, modular manufacturers and developers for affordable housing initiatives. And then seek technical mentorship and funding. So leverage some of these contacts made and these just some of the contacts maybe there's only out there, but people are housing society, North Star, set up for guidance. Um. So conclusion, my combined experience at Housing Central Conference and the Modular Construction Tour reinforced a powerful vision for our housing strategy. Simplicity, speed and partnership. By embracing modern construction technology like the modular systems. And by leveraging external expertise, we have a real opportunity to accelerate meaningful housing globally in our community, not two decades. But within two or three years. I look forward to working with council and staff and trying to send you these insights and talks. That's my report.
Thank you, Council.
Um are you able to share that with council?
Yeah, it'd be great to uh if you could send it actually on to uh uh Mister Buck and.
Council Wilson, did you have anything to add to that?
Well, it'd be impossible to add anything else that but we'll take.
I think you try.
Yeah, well, yes. I think my takeaway was how important Klesnikovs is.
Yeah.
Uh I was almost embarrassed to be down there to be learning so much about them, knowing that they're in our backyard. Uh they to me were the talk of the conference while we were down there and if there's. I guess any way that we can keep it on our radar of what they're doing and if we can apply that to trail, it's. Gosh, it would be such a win win for everyone. But yeah, it was one way of the sort of the spotlight they took away from the conference there. Uh but yeah, other than that, it was everything else that Paul had said. It's a good conference to be at.
Yeah, that's great.
Dark was, we were together and and like we were meeting with them and they were talking about like, you know, we don't even have to. We can literally go from factory to.
Yeah.
Product.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, like just our proximity is.
Yeah.
And the quickness of now which they're building, I mean, the the tour Paul is talking about, it's in, is it over nine stories? Like to see Klesnikovs there in downtown Vancouver, that almost didn't make sense at first, but then you get the description and the explanation and. Yeah, it's just it's amazing that they're doing that here on the West Gouges and if we can. Get some of that over here, it'd be be amazing. Thank you.
I just wanted to say thank you to Council Cashall for putting us in touch with the Aurora Housing. Um because Glenn actually sent me an email asking if I was down there and I said no, but. Council Philston and Butler were there, so we got them in touch via you. So thank you for reaching out to that group and then we were able to make that connection.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Team effort.
Thank you.
Yeah, no, I agree. I'm glad you guys had the opportunity to go.
Yeah.
And um yeah, so it's something that's been of interest to me as well. Yeah.
That was an excellent report to Council Brother.
Okay, that's uh is there anything uh for questions serious? Anybody? Okay, thank you. Council Butler, did you want to say something?
Change the subject completely. Um it's just around revolving around the uh twenty twenty six PC winter games.
We.
And um I'm not sure if this is the appropriate time or not to just maybe ask some questions around it or.
I think if you've got some curiosity or some questions, I know that um. Or a practical professor uh who read is 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 joined, so he might be able to have a bit of feedback where he. And again, you've got questions for us to go out and get answers to.
Yeah, well, I was just more forward uh thinking to bring some of these questions forward. In hopes that um my perceptions are are wrong. Um and um I was just wondering if it was something that might be possible if staff could invite the organizing committee. For uh to the next council meeting to uh just sort of uh give us some. Idea around volunteer numbers, their financial commitments and preparation timelines. Um the city is responsible partially for some possible of those from the original bid. Which wasn't really a bid, but um. So I'm just more concerned about what that looks like from our end going forward. I think at the end of the games, there are numerous different issues around. On motion and stuff like that. Um. So if if maybe we could just invite Mr. Stephen Ian or.
And Mr. Burhead, I actually talked about that as he was uh talking about some volunteers.
We are like, I mean, like if you kind of crunch the numbers, we have to we have to sign up twenty three point seven five people per day, including Christmas Day boxing. Saturdays and Sundays to hit their volunteer numbers. And if they're requiring criminal record check to be able to work with children.
Not for children, yes, but not for every.
Those are taking approximately like four to five months to process it.
I think we can get. Yes, I speak to that. So as C A O noted, uh I had a discussion with them after the. Horse lighting ceremony on Thursday. Um. Right now, we're intending to talk to having them come at the January twelfth meeting.
Is that soon enough or?
We could try for the December eighth, but it's a little compressed on on their timeline. Uh that's still over a month before the games. Um and. The board will be doing a lot of their own work on trying to. Access volunteers on outside of that. So while this is another avenue, there is a number of avenues that they should be um trying to. Achieve to to get the volunteer numbers they have. Um so I don't know if it would, it's a great way to get more awareness to it. Um I don't know if that would, it would be the singular source, so um either we'll try and see if they can during the December eighth. Um if not, the January twelfth meeting. Yeah.
I guess my it's just, you know, like I said, like I really I'm sure that all the things are on track and. And if there's anything that like the city or council. Help with. Success.
Okay. Thank you uh for that. Um Council Butler, is there any other questions for question here? Okay. So we just need a resolution to rise from the committee of the whole, please. Is there a second or? Thank you. And all those in favor. Thank you, everyone. And we will be reconvening at six o'clock the regular five o'clock meeting.
Thank you.